Letters and process direction.
Okay.
But also a whole staff issue here.
Yeah, I think both Caitlin and Melissa have some information they want to give. I think, you know, from my perspective, looking at this, you know, this is always a difficult thing to do when you're changing your comp plan and your future land use map. And then the next step was to look at the zoning map and make some modifications there. And I think from our perspective, listening to folks, you know, that have come in, I think that going through the process, early on, we've talked about where we were going, what we were doing. And I think we understood where we were going. You know, I think after we, you know, had sent out the letters, it was clear that there was some confusion on what we were doing. So I think from a staff perspective, and with mayor council, we wanted to put this on here and say, let's step back, let's hear from the mayor and council, how you want to proceed with this and get some direction on it. You know, listening again to the folks in the community that are there, I know our staff has talked with hundreds of people and worked with a lot of them. So I think I want, I would like maybe Melissa and Caitlin to talk about where we're at with this and talk about where we can go.
Right. So we approved the comp plan, and then for the next six months, we worked on the zone code, and we workshopped that with you and planning and zoning. So then we adopted the new zone code in April, which created a mixed use and a mixed residential zone and eliminated the multifamily zone. So then we needed to look at the zone map because we had people that were in a zone that no longer existed. So I think in this memo that Caitlin put together, and then I collaborated on it with her, I think what's important to note is that nobody's zone has changed, right? The letters were a reach out to say, hey, we're going to be doing some form of a citywide zone map amendment. If you, if you want to be a part of that, we can just roll you in. If you want to stay in your existing zone and you're not multifamily, because if you're multifamily, you can't, you know, let us know. And so we have this massive spreadsheet where we've been talking to people and kept track of their wishes. So we sent out, there were seventeen hundred and twenty-one parcels in the city that could change zones based on where the comp plan was going. So we sent out those many, that many letters. In detail, we've spoken to five hundred and nineteen of them. So those are ones where we actually had a conversation to document, and we have a spreadsheet where we keep track of who we talked to. Several hundred more just talked to someone for a second to get a handout, or, you know, we have a bunch of, we have the zone map, we have the zone code, we have the land use table, we have the description of each zone. So all the staff at the city, I mean, I wouldn't say all, but lots of the staff at the city handled, fielded those phone calls. So we didn't keep track of those because a lot of times we wouldn't even know who they were. They might just say, hey, I was just curious what's allowed in mixed residential. And we'd give them the handouts and they'd go on their way. So of the ones that we spoke to in detail, three hundred of them asked to remain in their current zone. So we just marked them on the spreadsheet. And then we haven't scheduled any kind of a hearing yet, right? We were kind of gathering all that information to see what people were wanting to do. And then we would schedule a hearing with planning and zoning. And then we were trying to decide if it was another hearing with council or a meeting with council. So I kind of wanted to explain that, like, this was still all the information gathering stage to kind of get some things cleaned up. One of the other things that's going on is that there's three hundred and twenty-three parcels in the city that are currently nonconforming, that if they were included in the zone map amendment, could get out of being nonconforming. So maybe there are one, but there are lots too small. Like, for whatever reason, that's just the way it happened in the past. If they were in an area that was shown as going mixed residential, we could get them conforming. Or people that are in the suburban zone, but are in a lot that's much smaller than a half an acre. And we don't necessarily know why all these things exist, or Donna probably does, but like, there's just, there's parcels like that that have been subdivided over time that are nonconforming. And so we could clean them up. Maybe they're shown to go R1 or something else, and we could clean them up, too. So it was kind of a process to kind of get us going in the, in the vision of the comp plan while also cleaning a lot of kind of issues up out there.
So they'd be grandfathered in per se?
Um, no, I mean, that's what's tough, is we have a nonconforming code in our, in our code. So if they're nonconforming, they're really kind of limited on what they can do. They can't expand that nonconformity a lot of times. So let's say someone's zone residential suburban, and, I mean, we have several of those that just have like a manufactured home on them. And then they want to add on, or they want to build a garage or something like that, then we're really kind of stuck. And a lot of times, those people can't afford the fees to go through a process of actually coming in with, for their own zone map amendment. And so we kind of feel bad for them, you know, like, they want to do things and we can't really let them. And then they, they can't meet the setbacks, like, you see what I mean? Like, there's just a lot of things that could get cleaned up if, you know, they really are an R1 use, but they're zone suburban.
So, so in one of the comments that Mr. De Priest read in Imagine Hayden, and we've heard, we've heard this before, is, you know, no, no grandfathered uses from, from that citizen that made that comment. Well, we have to, right? State law requires us, legal nonconformities are a property right. You've got an actual vested property right to continue the use of your property, regardless of what, where the zoning moves for the city, right? So that's why we have residential homes in the middle of the commercial zone in Hayden.
Yeah.
You know, that happened. At some point, it happened, right? And they are allowed to continue, right? The city doesn't come in one day and bulldos the house and say, you're in commercial, you can't be here. No, they are allowed to continue until they no longer use the property for that purpose. So we have a lot of, and cities do, we have multiple, all cities have this problem. If you, we, I don't know how we'd ever get out of getting rid of nonconformities, ever, ever. I mean, it's, so it's, it's common everywhere. It's just what happens when, when cities develop over time and, and they change their zones, you know? So I live to Boise Four Island, if you're familiar, southeast Boise, there's an industrial section, right, farther out. And then there's just homes all around it as the freeway kept going. And Mike runs really far, and nobody thought homes would ever be out there, and then they're all around it now. I mean, right? So there's just, there's a concrete plant, like, right there off of Federal Way, and there's homes all around it. Is at one point, that was thought to be way out of town, industrial, not having a sea of residential around it. So it's a really common issue. It's not something just specific to Hayden. But we do have a lot of properties like that. Nonconformities present a lot of issues with staff. You have to get really creative. It's not just a black and white of what they're allowed to do on the property. You know, they can't enlarge or expand, but yet if it burnt down, they get to rebuild it, right? So it's a really weird concept, and nonconformities present a challenge all the time. And a lot of it's just governed by case law, in Idaho. So the hope here with at least nonconformities is to try to get those folks into a zone that makes more sense for really what's on their, what's on their properties, to allow them to have more use of their own property, right? So right now, they're limited. They're really more limited. There's, you know, still stuff we can do, and they can use their property, but they are more limited. And so they get calls on that a lot. So I just wanted to clarify that. We would never, I understand that citizen's comment, we would never be able to do that, that's, they have a vested property right. And there's state code prohibiting us.
So grandfathering was a poor choice.
Yeah. Strike that from your side.
Right. I just, like, in the grandfathered uses, those are allowed to exist.
It actually benefits these nonconforming uses because it tells them, okay, you're R1 now, this is what you can do.
Twelve of them are ag lots that are not, not ag lots, right? They're just leftover zoning that's ag, but they're ways too small to be considered an ag lot. I mean,
Well, I, you know, somebody that built a home in a nonconforming place, I mean, I'm certainly not in favor of going, oh, sorry about that, Rock.
Yeah.
That doesn't work for me.
They're mostly from a long time ago, so I don't know the history on them. But when people buy those, and then they come in and tell us their grand plans, and we're like,
Oh, there's, well, there's been a lot of things over the years. It just happens, and we're just trying to clean it up. And that's, that's nice.
Yeah, so that's, that's the cleanup on those. And then, of course, we have the multifamily zone that no longer exists. So those people are really hanging out there. And Caitlin said that we treat, in the meantime, we have to treat them as a nonconformous use as well. So we kind of.
There's nothing else we can put them to be, other than they're allowed to continue to exist. They were a proper use at one time. So obviously, anybody in multifamily, we're, we're not gonna, they get to continue their, their, the zone multifamily, the actual multifamily zone, would obviously get to continue their, their uses. And those incidental to residential property. But there's no code, right? So when somebody comes in and maybe want to seek especially a use permit, once permitted under the zone, well, doesn't condition experiment, well, it's not, you don't have the zone. It prevents, it presents problems. We need to, we, we, the city should be doing that. It should be moving towards, that was the intent, I mean, in the letter.
That was our intent, we're moving towards.
Well, listen, the, the letters that were sent out, was there an actual definition of multi-use, R1?
There wasn't. Abby's shaking her head, like, those were the handouts that we gave people as they called in and stuff. I mean, do I wish that we did? Yes.
Okay, well.
I mean, there's a lot that we kind of learned through this process. I mean, we all looked at the letter, thought it looked good, but I mean.
Well, I think, from my point of view, I think it's important, though, that we educate folks, not to educate them to agree with us, to educate them on what it means. Because being on P and Z myself for three years, it's not an easy thing to understand.
Yeah.
There's a lot of complications there. So I guess I'm, I'm not quite sure, but I, education somehow, whether it be a, you know, a town hall meeting, or a different approach or something, I just think, maybe it might be a better idea to, you know, because we're asking people to say, oh, do you agree or you don't? And maybe they're not quite sure what that means. What, what are they agreeing? If they agree to R1, what does that really mean?
We've, since we paused it, we do have a new draft, because we, once we scheduled the hearing, if we scheduled a hearing, we have to notice everybody again. So we haven't, this was like a reach out, we would have to notice everyone. And we've got a lot more description on what things are and stuff in there. So we've learned, we've learned from some of the feedback, and the letter is a little more understandable now.
And we've never noticed for a public hearing. The letters that were sent, yeah, the letters that were sent out are preliminary notice that, you know, you can, the city's looking at initiating a zone change.
Right.
And so, under the Local Land Use Planning Act, we have to notice fifteen days before a public hearing. And there are so many properties under the Local Land Use Planning Act, unfortunately, just on the limits here, there's a, there's an option under sixty-seven, sixty-five, zero, no, sixty-five eleven, two, if there's two hundred or more properties, to just post on the boundaries. Well, look at how many properties there. There's like no way that our public, like, all of the city staff would be posting on properties. So we will post in the newspaper and on, you know, on the website, as we always do. We always publish in the newspaper, that's required, and mailers will go out against each individual.
And our notice in the paper has to be more prominent.
It does. It's got columns. Yep, it's more prominent. It's got a whole formatting requirement. But we, we haven't noticed for that yet.
We haven't done that, any of that, yet.
We need direction on what council wants to do with the letters before we can move forward. So in my, in Melissa's memo, we gave kind of four options. You could do, you could decide to initiate a zone change on only those properties that were zoned multifamily, which no longer exists. You could decide to, decide to initiate a zone change of properties of multifamily, and those that are currently nonconforming, which staff has a list of those that they could be conforming.
Three hundred and twenty-three of them.
You know, they could be conforming. You could decide to move forward with all.
So there's, so there were seventeen twenty-one total, and three hundred exactly have asked to remain in their current zone. So if we just went forward with all of it, it'd be fourteen hundred twenty-one parcels.
Another option is you could decide to impose some other limit, like, you know, I don't know how council feels about this, allowing, you know, those properties only in under a certain acreage, you know, not the forty acre tracts or fifty acre giant. I think that's what's caused a lot of concern that I've, that I've heard from Congress. And I understand the concern, I do. So I'm just trying to, we're just trying to gauge, we just got to move forward. We're kind of, we're kind of.
So we thought that, I think it was Councilman Roder that was talking about not, like, kind of feeling like we were giving the, like, developers of big pieces of property a free pass. And that's not what we were intending on doing. We were just making it, the, the process kind of equal for everyone. And so if that was the sense, then by limiting it, we were thinking maybe a maximum of five acres, then we can get those people kind of to the new zone. But if you're larger than that, then maybe you have thoughts someday of subdividing and that kind of a thing, then you would have to just come in for your own process. And then maybe that allows us to clean up the majority of things without that sense, even though that was never the intent, but that sense of allowing people that have maybe twenty or forty or eighty acres, the opportunity to change in this city-initiated process.
And under the city.
We're trying. We've got lots of options.
Yeah. And under the city-initiated process, you know, and I mentioned that in my memo, but just, you know, for the folks here, there's no fee. It's a city-initiated process. So, so we've not taken away anybody's ability to come in on their own. They could come in. We've got the zone code. It's passed now, so those zones, so those zones exist. Those options to go to those zones exist. We could see a request, I want to request my zone, you know, zone change to, I don't know, mixed residential. So that's an option. So the fee that covers that, though, governs staff time. You all know this from, from.
It's not a revenue generating.
Going through fees. A lot of fees don't generate revenue. They can't, it's illegal to do so. So the city initiated, it, it's, it's like, it's not a, it's not a relevant or fair argument to say, well, then, look at all those fees we missed out on. Yeah, but look at all the staff time you freed Donna and Melissa and Chad up with, you know what I mean? So that was the thought on the city-initiated, is we could potentially sit through hundreds of zone hearings.
Right. And just not having the time.
And maybe we still might. I don't, I don't know.
We still may, but just, you know.
We're high-centered, and we need something to get us off of it.
Right. Yes.
We got to figure it out.
Do you have comments yet?
Well, just planning and zoning and comp plans and stuff, that is constantly a moving target. We started, we started doing that twenty-some years ago at the county. Okay? And that was before the grass burning ban and all this, all this property out here. They were raising bluegrass and stuff like that. The farmers were happy and all that. That battled out. The county is still going on today. It's, and all that, something changes all the time. In the city of Hayden here, this is a relatively new town. This town only came into being in nineteen fifty-five. When I was mayor here, there was only two thousand people here. And everything that we've done since then has been a learning process. And we have made mistakes, no question about it. Have we been bought off by the developers? No. And some people that live in different parts of the country, the rules are different than other states than they are here. We always try to comply with the law, even though we don't agree with it sometimes. And sometimes it doesn't make any darn sense at all. And we try to get our lawmakers to do something like, like that, you know? But seriously, there's no intent here whatsoever to shove anything down people's throats. There's no advantage to us to do that. We want to do it right. We do the best we can with what we have. And if there's some disagreement and it doesn't work out, there's always going to be some. And we'll go through that and we'll address it, and we'll take care of it the best we can. That's all we can do, you know? I mean, we're, we're not the kings and queens here, where you just command the subject to do that. That's how this works. So.
Right, right. And when we talked to these five hundred and nineteen people, some of them would reach out and say, I don't think what you're showing makes sense, and here's why. And we thought through every single one of those. And we, we had a list that we walked through in a workshop with planning and zoning, not this meeting, but the meeting before that, to kind of talk through these, we call them our quirky areas, the ones that maybe needed to be a little different. And so, just so people know, it's not like we're saying, do this or else. That's totally not it. We, it was to open a conversation and make sure we were going down the right path and giving people some options.
And people, you know, the option always exists to seek a comprehensive plan amendment for a property, right? If it's shown to be one thing, and they would like a different zone, they can seek a comprehensive plan, map, you know, amendment, and then seek a zone change under that. I mean, those, we don't strip those processes of people. Those exist. Those exist by our code and state code, you know, the option to do that, you know, a comprehensive plan. You know, we've heard a lot about it just being a planning document. I mean, it is. It's passed by resolution. It's not by, it's not by an ordinance, but it's also the precursor to the validity of your zoning ordinance. So that, that's directly out of the land use planning act, the Supreme Court. So we have to have it, and then we have to follow, you know, we have to look to that for our zoning. So that's just, that's the order of events that had happened. So we updated our comprehensive plan map. With that, two new zones were created, one was eliminated. So we're just marching forward of, we need code to support those new, those new zones. We have codes now to support them. So we need to at least figure out zoning property for the zone that was eliminated, and whether or not the city wants to include more properties in that. That's, that's totally up to the council to decide that.
Do you have any questions, Sharon?
I have a question for Melissa. You mentioned a town hall meeting at one point during your comments. Could you touch more on what you would go into that?
Well, we had an open house where people could come in. We, we had some comments that, that people that worked couldn't call or come in to ask us questions about it during the day. And so we were sensitive to that. So we held an open house in the evening and basically said we'd stay till as late as people were still coming. And we didn't get a ton, but we did get a few people that came in during that time. So that's, yeah. And during that, I mean, we spent sometimes a half an hour with one group, you know, to, to explain everything to them. So, I mean, we're always open to giving our time and explanations to anybody.
Thank you. What I'm thinking is that it sounds like there's still a number of people out there that may have questions, may have comments or concerns. And I'm wondering if we should put something that are meeting together in the evening where people can come and, you know, we can help educate them on the different R1, what the changes are in the plan, have some maps with, you know, the designations for the, the different changes. And, and I don't know, like, if one would be enough, or if we would need a couple. I guess we could have one and see how many people. See how many people attend, and if that helps address the concerns that are going on.
Yeah. I mean, I, I'll do whatever. I, you know, when people really do want to, you know, when they call and they really do want to learn about it, I schedule a one-on-one with them. And usually Donna will come in. And to really go through and bring people along on the whole journey, it takes about two hours. So we've done that a few times now, Donna and I. So really, we're not trying to hide the ball. Like, if people want to truly come in and, and learn about it all, we take the, in a second, we take the time to educate them.
Okay. And then also, before we would plan anything like that, do we need to get the money issue, is the putting a cap on the number of units per acre?
So that code amendment is a wholly separate, that's a wholly separate process. So that's just the code.
Are you talking about the mixed use?
Is that what you're talking about? I took that to be a shot. Sorry.
Yeah. So we worked, we did workshop some modifications with planning and zoning last night. So I'm happy to come forward to council and workshop with you guys, too. So we just did last night.
Yeah, the plan was to have a good planning and zoning last night and have them discuss it, any comments and things we learned from that, to come forward and have a workshop July thirteenth, our, our next meeting.
And then we'll have to schedule a hearing, right, with planning and zoning, and then a hearing with you guys.
The zone code amendment requires a public hearing.
So, so we've still got a process to go through on that, too.
So we, as council members, can we add our input on that as well?
Yeah, that's, I don't want to schedule the hearing with planning and zoning until we workshop with you as well. That's how, it always starts at planning and zoning and then with you guys. And then we go back and do the hearing with them, and then with you. But I would rather workshop and feel like we were there before we do the hearing.
You know, I go back a couple of years ago, when we were talking about improving or fixing the roads in Caravello Estates. And the conversation went to, let's be prudent with our dollars. And if we're going to fix the roads, should we put sewer in, sidewalks, do an LID, all of that stuff, rather than put it in and then dig it up later?
Yeah.
And I remember we sent out notices to those folks to come to a meeting. And they were all mad as hell when they got here because they felt we were shoving this down our throat, when in reality, we were asking for their opinion. And it worked out, they didn't want it, so we didn't push it, and they got the roads fixed.
Right, right.
So that's kind of, that's kind of where I'm going with this, is I'm getting the, people just start understanding it, and they think we're trying to ram this down their throat. They're all already suspect of government anyway. I mean, that's just how it is today. But, but, yeah, I think, somehow, I think we should reach out and do some more education there.
Well, just for Caravello Estates, the subject came up, what happened? That was annexed into the city the way it is.
All their lots are nonconforming, by the way.
Yeah, yeah. It is. It's out there all by itself. There's no, there's almost septic tanks, and the city annexed it. And while they have a reasonable right to expect the city to take care of their roads and stuff like that, the roads are falling apart, but they don't have any sewer in there. City code says that when you do that, they need to hook up to the sewer. At the time when that was going on, and it was a little slow, and we looked out there, most of them were working class families and stuff like that. The cost per home was approximately sixteen thousand dollars per home for them to put the sewer in and for us to do the road in a proper manner. And so we gave them a choice. You want, we did some investigation on this, and we checked with Panhandle Health. There had never been a notice of any septic tank failures in Caravello Estates or anything like that. So it was not a health problem. It was no problem. So we invited them into a hearing. I was sitting next to a guy right here in this room. And those SPO, he's really going, ready, the key's ready, go fight. He's going to hang us right there. And the guy sitting next to me, right on the other side says, just a minute, let's see what they're doing. And so what we did is we gave them an option. Would you rather stay on your septic tanks? Would you rather have us repair the roads as best we can? Because there's no sense in tearing them all up and doing them over and then having to put sewer in later. Would you like to do that? And we will repair the roads as best we can, and it will save you sixteen thousand dollars per home. Now, what do you want us to do? Well, you know what they wanted us to do, and that's what we did. And we've done that in more, in more than one area around here, you know, playing ball with the people. It's, it just makes sense to do that. And that's a unique situation over there. And it'll probably remain, like, the old guard's it, you know? I mean, so it isn't, it isn't, we're not trying to cram anything down anybody's throat. And people here, most of, a lot of are working class people, sixteen thousand dollars for their house to put sewer in. And people here, most of, a lot of them are working class people, sixteen thousand dollars for their house to put sewer in is a lot of money. I paid for two of them on my place, you know, years ago. And so, and we've got a history of doing that and once, but they get mad when they first hear what's going on, it's the government. We all don't trust government, we've got plenty of reasons to feel that way, it's been going on for years. But the reality is we work with them whenever we can. Sorry, I let it in.
No, no, I, no, but I, but I bring that example up because I, I think we should do our due diligence and, I, I guess I would propose, I don't know if you'd call it a town hall meeting.
I'm just going.
I, I would propose, propose that we start like at ten o'clock in the morning and have it go into the evening. So that people have the whole day to, whatever their schedule is, they can come in and get their, a- and then that way we're not having fifteen hundred people show up, which, what are we going to do, fifteen hundred people? They're not going to fit.
Right.
So I, I guess, does that sound?
Sounds great.
So, so I'm, I'm just looking at timing wise and then, you know, process wise, whatever we do is going to require another letter to go out to all of those. And so we want, we want to have that clear and have the information out as well and, um.
Maybe, maybe Brett, just interrupt for a second, maybe we have the workshop with council and staff and kind of lay it out on what everybody thinks we should do with it?
With the mid, with, with the workshop on the mixed use code or just?
Well, I'm, I'm not sure, I'm just kind of throwing a, throwing out there, not that I.
Okay.
You're going to, you're going to make me want to have, you know, those maybe a little bit separated. We could have a workshop that has both of those items, you could have the, the discussion they, they had at P and Z. And so you have that information if you feel like you need that to make your decision on this. And sometime that night.
Well, I mean, we could be scheduling the open house in the meantime, though.
Yeah, we can still do an open house, that's not it, we can do that.
Yeah, I mean, if we.
But I, but I was thinking, what, I'm trying to, we need a decision from the council on getting these letters out and moving. So the, the options one through four at some point.
So if we do the open house, yeah, still we have to pick an option to move forward with.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, whether or not we could, you could still, if you workshop that, you could put it on there for a decision later that night to give direction. If you still didn't feel comfortable after the workshop, you could, you could delay it some more. But, and I also throw this out there, Donna, don't scowl at me or, uh, if, but I was thinking with the letters, if maybe we can turn the letters around and, and I'm open to any, any thought here. Instead of saying on the letters, if we don't hear from you, then your, your zone changes, that we switch that around, that if we don't hear from you, you stay in your current zone. I don't, would that make people?
Multi-family.
The multifamily, they have, those need to change because we don't have that.
So Brett, just to let you know, when the first letter went out, my proposal was that every single person that got the letter, we had to hear back from. That was my proposal, so I'm not scowling.
Okay, all right, I'm just saying, because that was, you know, and we have this inside, you know, we're, we're learning, I think, for, that was one thing I noticed looking at it is that, i- instead of an automatic change, that it's, it doesn't change unless we hear from them. And so I just curious for stuff.
I don't want to, I, I, I'm, we can do whatever and we can be very clear that this is a change. I just don't want to further confuse people.
Yeah.
Now we've changed it to this way, it's, I just want to, I don't want to confuse people.
Yeah, none of us want to do that.
But we can, we can work on it so it's just absolutely clear.
All the work that you've done, you guys have done in the last two years, and when we had the meeting over at the school and we got the input from all the people and all that kind of stuff. What we're talking about here doesn't mean that you have to reinvent everything that was done in that whole process, you know? I mean, isn't there parts of this that are still going to stand on their own two feet and going to work well? There are some things that stick out that maybe bother people more than others, you know? Isn't that what we ought to consider? We can talk about that and we can do it at a workshop or whatever.
I mean, there's lots of parcels that aren't changing at all.
Yeah, right, right, so some of that you don't have to do, you know, so it's not like you reinvent the wheel.
Right.
I think where we're at, and I, and I hope, I don't want to speak for anybody that's here, but I think I've heard from others in these meetings, that, that the comp plan is still, still good, we want to keep the comp plan and move forward. But there might be a couple of things we can change in the code that would, would, could modify.
Right, that's what we're focusing on.
Modify some things, and that's what we're focusing on, focusing on. So we're not, we're not suggesting go back to redo the plan, it's, are there some code sections?
And that was the focus of the workshop at P and Z last night, was code.
Yeah, it was the code.
Yeah, well, we've heard that, we've heard the comments, we took them, we're trying to.
We're trying to.
Have something, change it, we've heard from the public on that.
Okay, so we're going to schedule an open house and then we're going to schedule a workshop with council after that open house to kind of move forward or?
I don't know, do you want to have, uh, a discussion before the open house? So staff is clear on what council is seeking?
I want to tell people something and then how to change again. That's what I'm worried about is that how.
Well, would we do that?
It's kind of confusing enough at this point.
So maybe we should have the workshop before?
Yeah.
And now you can, you can pin us down and then if we change later, you can go, see what I mean?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we'll plan on the thirteenth, um, if that's okay to workshop. Okay, to, to talk about this and then, and we'd like to get some, get some direction, um, sta- staff, kind of move forward.
Workshop with P and Z took about forty-five minutes or an hour.
Yeah, it did, on just the mixed use code, so this would be mixed use plus the zone map stuff. So it might, it might take an hour and a half or a couple hours to workshop and stuff, just.
I mean, I want you to be, I want to be fair to you guys, so you guys, everybody has input, we get, you just got rushed, I don't want.
Right, that's the thing, so really have everyone understand what we're doing and why and.
And we should do that before you send any more letters out.
Yes.
So, yeah, because. Tell them your direction, I mean, that's, we wanted to step back and say, okay, you know, there was some confusion there, let's hear from council, I just want to move forward with this.
Yeah.
And I think if we, if three thirty's okay, that gives us an hour and a half. We do have, uh, budget, I'll, I'll put the budget at the end of the regular meeting then, because we will need to finish the sewer part of our budget that night and, and finalize any.
Under eighties.
Yeah, in eighties. Yeah, so, yeah, we could, we could.
So we don't have to take, we don't have to take any more action on this?
Well, well, I think we're hearing from you, uh, in some direction to move this forward.
Let's start at three because they always like to take like a break.
A break.
And I, like Donna said, just the mixed use code took an hour last night, so.
Okay, for three, council, it's whatever works.
We're here for you, Brett.
Let's do three then, so we don't have to tie it to all thirteen now.
Okay, good.